Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the May 7, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. It was scheduled to have a executive session at 6 o'clock. It was canceled because things have changed and it wasn't necessary. Let's see, can I have a roll call, please?
All five selectmen are present, as well as town council and town administrator.
All right, pledge allegiance. How about you, Mr. Buckminster, since you're here with us?
Pledge allegiance to the black United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. All right. Announcements, let's start with Alan.
Nothing today.
What?
Nope.
Let's see, let's see. I think everybody knows that they're going to be doing some road milling over in Onset, on Onset Ave and West and South Boulevard, which I think it starts, what, the 7th?
Okay.
The 16th, and they're going to be paving. Supposed to be no parking from, is it 6 till 7, 6:00 a.m. till 7:00 at night on those roads, so beware. Makes them probably take alternate routes if you don't want to get stuck in it. Might be a wise thing. I was out taking a walk today and down to the Maple Springs Wildlife Management Area. So everybody knows it's turkey hunting season, so if you hear people out there banging away, that's probably what they're doing. So be aware.
Gobble, gobble.
And I guess that's about all for now.
All right, Peter?
The only thing I have is the Onset Fire District is having their annual meeting on the 21st of the month, and they're having their election from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. the next day on the 22nd. So just figured I'd throw that out there as a reminder for anybody in Onset who wants to go vote in their district election.
Very nice. Mary?
The Wareham Cultural Council is collecting opinions to help us set our fundraising priorities for the next few years. Please take a moment to complete the survey online at wareham dot ma dot U S backslash cultural dash council at the library dash main dot or spinny. Is that right? That doesn't look right, but anyways.
I think that's the website, and then you can go to the library or Spinney Library to do the...
Oh, okay. All right, too many dashes and dots here at the end. Okay. Also, the Wareham Garden Club plant sale is going to be May 18, 9:00 a.m. till noon at the old Methodist Meeting House down at the town green. This is where members of the garden club dig up their perennials, divide them, and then sell them so that we can afford to, you know, do the gardens around town scholarships and garden therapy for the adult daycare center in Wareham.
Yeah, we end up at our house anyways.
What's that?
We end up at our house usually.
Yeah, all the leftovers end up at Alan's house, so please come by them, because he hates babysitting.
So we know where to go to eat if we're hungry after the fact. All right, next is citizens' comments. Anybody here? Oh, come on down. Could you state your name, because in case we don't know who you are?
Thank you.
Pink shoes.
Crocs.
Sandy Slavin. Every year, you redo your liaisons to your various committees, and every year I come back and I say, can you please, at least once in the year, attend one of the meetings? It gives you a chance to meet the people who work at these meetings all the time, gives you an idea of what they're doing, and it allows us to see you. And you're always saying we have openings, but you have openings for committees that people don't know what they're doing because they never come back being reported in a liaison report. So how do you get people interested in joining them when they don't know what the committees are doing? Another option, well, not an option, but you used to do it. You used to invite the committees up here to talk to the selectmen, at least one committee every other couple of weeks, so they can tell you and the public what they're working on and maybe get people interested in joining that particular committee. So if you can think about inviting them up, you know, one every two weeks or something like that.
I like that idea.
Because we're running, we're running out of volunteers.
I like that idea.
Right now, Conservation Commission has seven. We're down to six. We'll be down to five, which means we must have four in order to hold a meeting. That gets pretty dicey. Everything is published, there's always hearings, et cetera, and we may not make a quorum with only four people available to make a meeting. So Conservation's looking for two full-timers and three associates. I'm putting a plug in for that. Okay, thank you.
You know, that's a good idea. I like that.
Yeah, thanks, Sandy.
We'll do that. We'll do that. And, you know, the other thing is maybe we can run an ad, too.
Yes, since we're supposed to.
For some of these, for some of these things, we'll get an ad in the thing and see if we can draw some people that way, too. But yeah, absolutely, we'll do that. And, you know, it's always been my opinion on liaisons that if the, that we shouldn't be just going every week to these meetings and sitting in and acting like we're participants. It's always been my opinion that if they need us, they will ask us to come. That doesn't mean you can't go there and check it out and see what's going on, but I think that they should, they should want you. They have a reason for you to go there, because, you know, we're not members of the board, we're just the go-between. And that's always been my opinion, but everybody has their own way with that. All right, next up, board comments. Alan, you're up.
Okay. I'd like to thank Dave Monade, Municipal Maintenance, Tempest Knob Boat Ramp. They basically remarked all the lines and handicapped, et cetera. Today did a nice job. Verallife on the marijuana Lower Main Street. I've been watching the traffic at Bessie Park, et cetera. There's no issues as far as any of the marijuana customers parking there. The police at the intersection where the crosswalk is is working well. I've seen no issues with traffic whatsoever in the, in the two-week period now. So as of this point here, everything's working well, and I don't see any reason to modify anything at all at this point.
And I heard that some people have actually gone into the store, so that's a good thing.
And some of the merchants I've stopped in, they say that they're seeing people they've never seen before, so.
So that's a good thing.
It's all a plus right now.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, seeing Mrs. Slavin just sit on committees, you can apply online, and you go through the selectmen's portal, Board of Selectmen's, and you go to the top menu item, and Committee Documents, and there's a Committee Application Online. You can do it right online and submit it. And you can also find in the same site Committee Vacancies and Openings, so that's one of the ways you can get there. I think applying online is a good, an efficient manner in which to do it. So please, take a look, and I didn't know that they were down in the numbers on the Conservation Commission. That must be things coming up, so take a look and apply, please. That's about it.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, I did notice the striping down in Tempest Knob. They've gone for a little bright yellow, so there's really no excuse for people who have difficulty backing up trailers. They've got bright yellow lines to see in their rearview mirrors now, so they should be able to park without being totally cockamamie. The Chargers don't get parked between the lines, they get parked in the ocean, unfortunately.
Catwash.
Yeah.
I saw that. It was on the general news, too. It was everywhere.
Yeah, and something else, I know that as far as, usually we're out grading roads this time of year, but if we had started this a couple of weeks ago, all we would have been doing would have been pushing mud around, which you have to wait for the roads to dry out enough for the grading to actually be effective, so don't worry. They will be out there as soon as we get out of this rainy monsoon season we've been having for the past two months.
That's all I have. All right, next up is appointments, reappointments, interviews.
Okay, for appointments, what I have right here, a bunch, a few constables, so I'd like to do them all together if there's no issue with any of these names. We have three of them, so I move that we appoint for a term, not, a term to expire no later than June 30, 2020, Richard White, Robert Short, and David DeCensio.
Okay, motion made by Mary. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
All right, and the next one is for my reappointment and for Peter's, to redevelop this morning.
All right, Alan, can you...
Make a motion to reappoint Peter Titelbaum, Mary Bruce, to the Wareham Redevelopment Authority for a term of one year, I believe.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Alan, it's seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Abstain.
Aye.
Oh, two abstentions, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
3-0-2.
So it's 3-0-2.
Not that we get paid money for this.
You can still sign those, by the way.
Yeah.
If you choose to.
Because I'm just signing the vote.
I can save it to the end.
License and permits, applications from BPOE Wareham, New Bedford Lodge 73, 285 Cranberry Highway for a change of hours. Hi, guys.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Guy Dantonio, Steve Hunt, Board of Directors.
Yeah.
This change of license is pretty simple. We started a breakfast a couple of years ago, and our customers have asked if, you know, they always have mentioned, this would be nice. Board of Directors finally took a look at it and said, you know, it is possible, other restaurants and places are doing it in town, so we filled out the paperwork, and that's really the only reason it's the one Sunday every week. For, our main purpose is really mimosas and Bloody Marys.
Okay, so the only change is Sundays, and what do the hour change?
Our Sunday is now 11 o'clock, so it would go to 9:00.
So you're going from 9:00 instead of 11:00?
That is correct.
The same end time, though?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so that's, any, any other questions from anybody? Mary, can you make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the new hours for the BPOE Wareham, New Bedford Lodge 73, Inc., for Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and Sundays, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
There is one correction. Saturday, our license is 10:00 o'clock.
10:00.
It is already 10:00 a.m. It opens at 10:00. Saturdays and holidays are 10:00 a.m.
Okay.
It's always been that one.
All right, so make that correction.
Yep. Saturdays and Sundays are 10:00 a.m.? Okay.
Nope, nope. Saturdays, Saturdays and holidays are 10:00 a.m.
Okay.
Sundays will now be 9:00.
Okay. So, motion made by Mary.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who is abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
But wait, we got, are you a member?
I abstain as a member of the Oaks.
Okay, so as a member of the Oaks, okay, so it'll be 4-0-1. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the new hours.
Yep.
Hope it works out.
It'll be fine.
All right, it's just about 7:15, so we have a here, a dog hearing at 7:15. Need a motion to open the hearing, hold on. For, let's see, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of Massachusetts and laws, we, there was notification given for a public hearing which would be held in the Board of Selectmen's Room for Tuesday, May 7, 2019, at 7:15 regarding a dog owned by Robert Brady, blah, 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 please find the attached constable letters, blah, 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 and the animal control. So I, could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Still made.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary. This is a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick. Okay, so now, I ask this question. Some of us, I know, would have a conflict of interest when it came to this case. For instance, myself, I put my dog in his kennel quite often, so that would give me a conflict. Does anybody else so declare?
I do the same thing. Bob's watched my dogs for years now.
So that's a conflict. Does anybody else have a contact? Alan, you also?
I filed with the clerk.
Okay, and you filed with the clerk. All right, so seeing that there are three members, and the requirements are that we have three members as a board, and that would only leave two members, I'm invoking, based on the board members' answers to my questions, the, the, the rule of necessity to allow those members to participate so that we may proceed with this hearing. Does everybody understand what I just did? Is there anybody who wants to reject, object to it? Okay, fine, then we will move on with the hearing. All right, I'm going to turn the hearing over, as we typically do with dog hearings, we turn them over to Peter, and he runs the dog hearing, and Peter, you're on.
Okay, first off, would everybody who intends to give testimony in this matter, please raise their right hands and, stand up, raise your right hands and repeat after me. This is anybody who intends to appear as a witness or offer testimony either in support of one party or the other. Okay. Aye?
Aye.
State your name. Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Thank you. You may be seated. Would the Director of Natural Resources, please come up? And would you read the complaint that you've submitted into the record for us to start?
I will. Good evening.
State your name, please.
Gary Buckminster, Roland Buckminster, Director of Natural Resources for the Town On Wednesday, April 10, 2019, at approximately 8:00 a.m., two dogs, described as a black and tan German Shepherd named Max and Fritz, owned and cared for by Robert Brady, attacked a woman identified as Ms. Marina Chabina. I apologize if I messed up the name. Unprovoked, unprovoked inflicting injury to both hands, as described as multiple puncture wounds, scratches, and bruises. She reported that while walking from, on Tyhonet Road back from the area of the herring run, a German Shepherd-type dog, believed to be Fritz, exited Upper Cape Canine property and ran up to her but did not immediately attack. A second German Shepherd-type dog, believed to be Max, then exited the property of Upper Cape Canine and approached her as well. Ms. Chabina advised me that, once the second dog arrived, Max, the first dog arrived, dog arrived, Max, the first dog, believed to be Fritz, bit her arm and hands. Ms. Chabina explained, the second dog, Max, then bit the backside of her jacket that she was wearing, however, did not make contact with the skin. Ms. Chabina explained, as she was trying to get both dogs away from her, she started to panic and yelled for help. The individual, later identified as Mr. Robert Brady from Upper Cape Canine, came from the property and assisted in getting the dogs away from her. Ms. Chabina recalled the individual yelling the name Max, which she believed was directed towards the second dog that had bitten the back of her jacket. The individual from Upper Cape Canine, Mr. Robert Brady, owner of Upper Cape, currently located on ADM property on Tyhonet Road, took control of the dogs. The area of Tyhonet Road where the attack took place had no, no trespassing signs, type signage posted on the roadway. There were no trespassing signs on the properties on both sides of the road, however, nothing was posted on the roadway itself. Tyhonet Road is a public road that turns into a private way owned by 80 Makepeace Company, and Ms. Marina Chabina is a resident of a, one of the budding 80 Makepeace Company residential properties near this location. Through the information I obtained ADM, from ADM, she did have permission to access this roadway, per the company. Attending quarantine was placed on both dogs. A rabies vaccine for Max had expired in 2013, and there was no proof of any vaccines for Fritz. Mr. Brady was issued a citation under Chapter MGL 14, MGL, Chapter 140, Section 145B for failure to vaccinate rabies, and, under the bylaw, he was also issued a citation for the leash law.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I guess I would ask for Mr. Brady to come up, and then we'll hear from other witnesses. Mr. Brady, you've heard and seen the complaint, obviously. Do you agree in some with the facts that have just been presented to us?
In some.
Okay.
Not fully, but that's the answer.
When did you become, and actually, we can open this up to questions from the board at this point, for Mr. Brady. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Brady at this point?
Not right now.
I'd like to hear what he says.
Okay.
To make his...
Yeah. What would, what would you like to say about the incident at this point?
Well, I can't deny that the dogs went out. I can tell you what I did see. It was early in the morning, I think it was even earlier than 8:00. In fact, my, my complaint says 7:00, which is probably more realistic. Typically, start my day, I let all the dogs out, not all at the same time. These two are mine, they know the premise, it's the only kennel life they know. This particular part of Tyhonet Road is private, this particular part of Tyhonet Road is posted, and it says that anybody with access has to have a permit. I learned today for the first time that apparently those that own real estate owned or developed by 80 Makepeace have an understanding, yet I'm not aware of any permit, for anyone to just walk about. The particular subdivision that, that Ms. Chabina lives in, and this has nothing to do with her, is probably a half-mile, three-quarters of a mile away, where they have their own sidewalks and beautiful walking trails and so forth and so on, yet it's fine, she wants to walk out there. But at that hour of the morning, I, I let the dogs out, they tend to their business. Within 10 minutes or so, they come to the back door, because they know breakfast and water is ready, and I open the door, they get right in their crates, and, and then I move on to the next dogs, depending on who might be staying. There are many dogs that come, like your own and your own, that I only have to open the door. I put a lead around my neck if I need it, they know the routine, they behave pretty well. There are some dogs that I would never let off a lead. Max and Fritz aren't, either of those. So, I did, upon going to the door, Fritz was actually at the door, seemingly ready to come in, I heard the yelling, saw that Fritz was out there in the road, I mean, Max was out there in the road, called him off, and in fact, I didn't even see him, it was only in, when he went back to the kennel on his own, I was standing there with, with the woman and said, are you okay? She yelled, no, she showed me the sleeve of her hand, which was like that, and it had two punctures in the sleeve. That's what I saw. She walked away, she didn't want to talk about it, and that's, I, I wasn't going to chase her. I assumed that, you know, I would hear something at some point if there was an issue, and I think within a couple of hours, somebody from the Division of Natural Resource showed up to the property and told me that there had been this incident, and that's when I learned her name and that she lived in one of the 80 Makepeace subdivisions. And I asked, of course, if she was okay, and he didn't know, and since then, I really haven't heard a whole lot of anything. Later, I don't know if it was that day or the following day, Gary gave me a call. He said he saw wounds, bruises, scratches. I've not seen that, I don't know if there are pictures that exist. I don't know if there's a report, I haven't been provided a report of the incident, I only have the same letter he just read into the record. But there are clearly some concerns with some detail, because in parentheses, believed to be one dog or the other, they were both quarantined, they're both fined. Fritz is actually not even three years old yet, his vaccine hasn't expired. I rehomed Fritz. Fritz is actually the son of Max, so they're like Mutton Jeff. And to them, it was somebody on the property, and their natural tendency is to just, one, check out and/or defend. I didn't see what instigated, what happened, and, and off Mrs. Chabina went. She walked away. I can show you, because I think it's important, just to know and clarify the facts, that the property is posted. So I brought these eight and a half by 11:00 dog glossy photos.
Dog glossy?
Yeah. But that sign is the entrance to the kennel. It's the old Broad and Gun Club, if anybody doesn't know where I am. That road is exactly where, in fact, she was beyond that sign where, where the dogs engaged. And while I'm here, I also have what's shown as the assessive map known as 111. And I'll point out, there's a little cul-de-sac, there's a road with a little cul-de-sac, and that is the end of the town way. Beyond that is where I am, and it's all private. In fact, the kennel is on that Lot 1000, I know the numbers aren't very clear, but it's a 52-acre parcel, and it is all private. So the dogs were quarantined, everything was fine, I never heard back from anybody until I then received this letter about being here this evening. And believed to be one dog or the other, I, I can't, I can't attest to that, because I really don't know. I yelled at both of the dogs. When I went back out there, Fritz, of course, followed me. Max was the one who was there circling the wagon, if you will, and to date, I don't know what her wounds really were. I've not been made aware, other than what I've been told. Normally, photographs are taken, I don't know if she sought any medical care, I've asked, I've, no, no information has been provided. I'm, I'm glad to see she's here, I'm going to guess she's okay, so, and then, relative to the vaccine...
To be honest with you, those are matters outside of the dangerous dog hearing.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think we really need to address those.
Well, there's a citation that's been issued, and...
Yeah, but again, that's...
I have different, okay.
That's a separate matter.
Different course of action.
Yeah.
Got it?
At this point, there were a couple of other people who wish to testify.
I have a quick question.
If you do have a quick question, yeah.
When you say you, in the morning, you let the dogs out, what does that mean?
Well, I lock the door in the evening. Today, for example, there are probably eight dogs inside. So I let Max and Fritz out first thing, they're the first two to go out, probably, primarily because they're the noisiest, they bark. So I unlock the door, I walk in, I open their crates, I take them to the front door, they go outside. They run about, they tend to their business, again, within five to 10 minutes, they're back at the door, ready to come in, because water and food is ready. And that's a, that's been a routine of their life. Max is 10, Fritz will be 3 this fall.
Okay, and, and you, as far as you know, they don't leave this property?
They, they never have a reason to unless, apparently, somebody's walking by. There's truck traffic all day long, they don't, they, they never leave the premise unless, if, if that's leaving the premise. Again, it's all one parcel, which includes the way, known as, it's actually technically off Tyhonet Road. It's not a public way.
All right, when you, and when you talk about the way, is that this dotted line here that comes off that cul-de-sac?
I think that goes all the way into Carver and beyond to Plymouth. But you see the, the little cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
That's the paved area, and that is the end of the town's way. That's the end of the public way. I'm well beyond that, probably a good 200 more yards.
Like you're off the dotted line here somewhere?
I'm off, yeah. If you look, there's a, there's a, there's also a parcel on the opposite side of the street, kind of chunked off separately, that's where the old Makepeace Estate was.
Yeah.
That's also private. That's on the pond, the pond is on the other side.
Yeah.
So yes, that's all private.
Are you the owner of the parcel in question?
No.
Where the kennel is?
No, I'm a tenant.
Okay.
Yep.
Who does own the, the property, just for the record?
Makepeace.
Okay.
Yeah, leased from them.
All right. You do have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses, which would include the Director of Natural Resources or anybody else who comes up to testify, should you desire.
Okay.
We have questions.
Is there somebody else with a question?
Bob, can you show me where your property is and where the attack was on the map?
Sure, well, I, that's, that map and the scale is...
It's just okay, I just want to know whether, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not the, the attack happened on... I'm just trying to figure out whether or not the attack happened on your property. Yep.
This continued, what you show as dotted line.
Yep, I know the road.
And, okay. So my building is probably in here.
Okay.
This is the old Makepeace Estate property there. The pond beach is right there. That's where people come down and lunch their boats and fish and so forth. There's actually a gate that goes across the road.
Yeah, I remember that one.
And so, I'm a bit, probably 200 yards, well beyond the town way on this...
Where did the actual attack happen?
Oh, it was probably right across the street from the building itself.
But on the street? Is that part of your leased property or not?
What? The road?
Yeah.
Well, technically, it's all one big parcel.
Yeah, but you have... I'm just trying to figure out what happened. So, the piece you have for the kennel, is that part of the area where the dog attacked? I'm trying to find...
Well, it was in this dotted line that she was walking.
Understand. But was that in the leased land that you have for the kennel, or that was outside the lease?
Well, I have the same use of that way. In fact, I...
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking simply, where the attack happened? Was it on the property that belongs to what you have leased, or that was on this road, which is not your property?
None of it's my property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question here. Is there any enclosure for the dogs for exercise?
I have kennels outside as well as inside. They were not in kennels.
And as part of your lease, are you allowed to use the property at will?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anybody have anything else for this witness at this point?
Not at this point.
And again, you have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses. Do there are other people I saw that were interested in testifying? Would you like to come up at this point? And tell us your version of the events? If you'll just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Marina Chubina.
You got to speak close to that mic, okay?
My name is Marina Chubina.
Are you picking this up, Bob?
Barely.
If you could pull the microphone literally almost right up...
Like this?
Pull the microphone towards you.
That's fine.
Yep, that'll be good. Speak right into it. They don't pick up all that well.
My name is Marina Chubina.
That's good, thank you.
I would like to testify that Gary's report is absolutely correct. Speaking about the timing, I do not leave the house around 7:00 o'clock. It's close to 8:00. I do morning walk, and this time I wanted to see the herring run. And many times, at meetings that we had with AD Makepeace, they were assuring us that we can use these roads. There is only one sign that is at the gates, which was there on that day. And the sign is saying that the gates are closed at 3:30. The other sign appeared after the fact. I do not see the picture, but I know that there is another sign that wasn't there, but now it is there on the tree, and it says that permit required for access. However, we were always assured, and we raised our concerns when Makepeace decided to entertain themselves with the kennel business. We raised our concerns how we will use this road for walks, and the road basically goes to the beach, to the place where there is a boat ramp. And Makepeace was always saying that the dogs will be under control all the time. It's not the first time when I see the dogs going loose. And sometimes it was in the evening. And when the kennel was opened, my mother, who is a senior person, but she's in a very good shape, she used to take the road and the trails on the bike to go to the Y. And when the kennel was created, she was not attacked, but scared by the dogs who were trying to follow her on the bike, and she stopped using these trails forever because she was basically scared of meeting a shepherd dog again. And I cannot, because we never reported this, not even to Makepeace, I just would like to mention this is a fact. So going back to my case, when I went down to the herring run and was coming back, I passed the parcel on the right hand, which is Tyhonet Road 200. And the road goes uphill, and I saw the tan-colored shepherd dog, huge, on the curb of the road. And I just stopped immediately because I was hoping that she will go back, and I wanted, basically, I was hoping that maybe someone is there and will call her. But unfortunately, she just assumed their aggressive stance and started running towards me. I didn't move. I didn't shout at this point. I didn't want to provoke her. All happened immediately. She immediately bit my left hand. I still have scars here, and I have pictures of their...
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yes, that'd be helpful.
The pictures were taken on the... Thank you so much. The pictures were taken on the fourth day. Gary took the pictures of the ripped jacket and the bites on the first day, and these pictures were taken on the fourth day. I didn't even expect that the healing would take so long, but the bites were strong. So when she bit me on the left hand, I instinctively tried to stop her, and she switched to my right hand, and it was like five bites total. It was... The skin was punctured, there was bleeding. I was... It all happened very quickly, and I was trying to fight her when she started biting me, but the other dog showed up and jumped on my back. I didn't even see him. And I just, at that moment, I thought that I will not be a winner in this fight, and I started yelling. And the guy showed up. I didn't know him before, never saw him before. And of course, she wanted to take control of the dog who was biting me because she was still having my hands and biting them, and she didn't want to let me go. And the other dog was jumping on behind, and he was... So he wanted to take the first dog who was biting me, and he turned his head and said "Max" to the other dog. That's how I learned his name, and that's what I told Gary. So when he asked me if I'm okay, I didn't want, of course, because I was in a kind of a shock. I didn't want to talk to him. I wanted him to take the dogs away. I said, "No, I'm not okay." And I didn't know what to do because I wanted to call, but wasn't sure if 911 is appropriate in this case because, basically, I survived. And I decided to go to Makepeace's office to disinfect my wounds and ask them which number should I call. I basically wanted to call Animal Control directly. And Chris Ariadi was there, and she suggested to call 911. That's how it all happened, and I think I do not have anything more to add. I can show you on the plan where the attack was made, and...
Yes, I think we're pretty clear on where it happened.
That's good.
Yeah.
She says it took place...
Okay. That's fine.
I'm sorry. I'd like to see where she says it took place on the map. If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Gary did a very good job. He came to my house several times on the same day to check how I am doing. I would like to thank you, him. And he also assured me that the dogs are vaccinated. So did Cheryl. They were calling me and making sure that I'm okay. The guy from the kennel never tried to contact me. I basically just, maybe would like to mention that I... It looks like that I just went away, but at a certain moment, I came back because I wanted to make sure that I memorized the sign because I didn't know how to report it, and I wanted to make sure that I will memorize the sign of the name of the kennel itself. So there was a moment when I came back, but there was no one there. But... So... Where is this road? Oh, that's Tyhonet.
That dotted road. The way along that dotted road is where it happened.
This is power lines. This is... Is this the kennel site?
The map actually starts on the portion of Tyhonet Road that, basically, right after it crosses over the highway. So if you orient that so that it's to the left-hand side, and then it cuts into the, you know, the villages up there.
Yeah, the village is not there. This cul-de-sac, where is...
Yeah.
This cul-de-sac, is it the cul-de-sac on the, at the end of the village?
When you walk up in the village...
Where is the kennel? Kennel is here. No, that's not kennel.
This is the road into the village, right here.
That's where shown the kennel is. That's where Bob says the attack happened.
This is the, this is the Tyhonet Road 200? Because there is a house there. I know that I passed the house.
Okay, so it would have been on the dirt road here.
Right, so...
And then the kennel is to the southeast of that.
That's right. But I was coming from the herring run. I passed the house, which is on the peninsula, on the island, which is private house. So I passed that point, and that's Tyhonet Road 200.
That's the cul-de-sac.
There is a mailbox there.
I believe she's speaking of Chris Makepeace's house.
Yes.
Down the ways.
So, just after I passed that house, the dog attacked me. I mean, not...
On the paved area?
Oh?
You were on the paved area?
No, it's the dotted road.
Okay.
I... If someone could show me where this Tyhonet...
Do you mind if I take a look?
Yeah.
No, please do.
Thank you. Okay, when you come in here, this is Tyhonet Road, and their headquarters would be right where that dot is.
That's right.
And then you take that road up, and this, right here, is where the herring run is. So you would be coming from this little area, coming back.
So this is the herring run?
Yeah, yes, correct. It would be, actually, would be right there.
Right here?
Mm-hmm.
So where is the house?
The house would be on this point right here.
Oh, so that's the little road that goes to the house?
Yeah, just about there.
Okay, so I was here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you want me to show them the marking?
Yes.
But that'll be part of the record anyway.
Do you want it up for...
Yeah, if you pass it up to us, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for marking that up for us.
Yeah, it's about where the kennel's right here.
Yep, okay.
Right where the kennel was.
Okay, so I think everybody...
It would have been right about in here, where this is, right about in here.
Yeah. I think everybody substantially agrees where the incident took place.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to add at this point?
No, I think I said everything that I wanted. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Does the board have questions of this witness?
I don't.
Mr. Brady, you do have an opportunity if you wish to cross-examine the witness. That's up to you. Okay, I just wanted to revise you of that, right. Is there anybody else who wishes to testify in this matter? If you'd come up, sir? And if you just identify yourself, please.
Sure, I will. My name is James Dugan, D-U-G-A-N, one G. And my wife Karen and I live at 19 Red Pine Lane, which is the Tyhonet Pond Estates. As it was stated, formerly managed by Makepeace. It's now been taken over by the HOA, so it's an independent HOA. And I want to start off by saying I can't speak specifically to this day in this particular attack. I was not there. I have no knowledge of that. But we do, many people within the neighborhood do use that road. We've owned the home for approximately eight years. And when we bought the home, as stated, Makepeace was managing the HOA, holding the meetings, and Mr. Chris Ariadi was the manager for Makepeace. So we were allowed to use all the facilities, that particular road. There was an announcement made at one of the meetings that the kennel was going to be coming. And certainly, many of the residents were concerned because we take our animals out early in the morning prior to us going to work, and also, we take our, there's many elderly people here. We take our grandchildren on that road. People ride mountain bikes on that road. And since we've lived there, we use that road often to just go for a walk. Just to set another boundary, we've been good neighbors to Makepeace. That particular area with the boat ramp just past the kennel suffered in the beginning a lot of vandalism. There were bonfires going on down there. We had to call the police many times, so on, so forth. So the gate at that area was at the herring run, left the beach area open. And there was a lot of access. There were a lot of things going on at night. As a matter of fact, if you stood in our living room particularly, it looks directly across the water to where that boat ramp was. And many times, we had to notify Makepeace of things that were going on.
Yes, I'm familiar with that area from my teenage years.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to kind of establish, but they have moved the gate now to a different location.
That's right.
But again, when Chris announced that the dog kennel was coming, you know, many people were apprehensive of how that was going to be handled. Would there be a fence? Would there be a kennel? And it was emphatically mentioned that if there were any issues whatsoever, that we should bring them immediately to Makepeace. So, the other thing that I did want to let you know that we as well, Karen, my wife, and myself, had a run-in at that location, at the kennel. I cannot state to you that it was the same dogs. I don't know. But they did come out of the kennel. We were walking. We ourselves had a yellow lab. Unfortunately, that dog has passed on now. But we were very protective. And on another occasion, and I'll let her speak to it, but Karen was there with the dog herself, and she also had an incident where the dogs came out and challenged her, and she had to yell for somebody to come and help. So, again, I just wanted to make sure that, make the record clear that it was very emphatic through Makepeace that many people enjoy that area for recreation. And so, when we bought the house, we were told that we could use that area anytime we wanted. We walk all, you say you're familiar with it. So, you must know where Frogfoot is?
Absolutely.
At the end of that road. And so, that would be our kind of walking distance, out to Frogfoot and then back on the road. And I couldn't even sit here and tell you how many times we've walked that area. So we're concerned as well. As I say, we, we walk our grandchildren, ride bikes. And that's basically all the knowledge I have regarding that, but we've had an altercation there as well.
Okay. Questions from the board for this witness?
Uh, no, not for the witness. I had a question for town council.
Well, go ahead and ask.
If this is all on private property, what say do we have in this? Is this more of an issue between the HOA and AD Makepeace Company? If, do the lease laws even apply on private property? Do we even have a say in this?
Well, yes, you do have a say in it. The, the laws don't, the, the dog by law doesn't automatically distinguish between incidents that happen on private property versus public property. The accused in the matter, in his opening statement, sounded as if he was attempting to assert trespass defenses that questioned whether the victim had any, alleged victim had any right to be on the property. And certainly that's a defense that Makepeace, as the property owner, might be entitled to assert in a tort case. But I don't think that type of defense is applicable on the question of whether this person was bitten by the dog and whether the dog is dangerous.
Are you seeking to cross-examine the witness?
I'm actually seeking to...
Because we still have the witness up here, so. Like, I have to, I have to give the board opportunities to, to examine the witness if they want. Do you have any questions? Alan, Jim, Mary?
I don't know.
Patrick? I don't have any questions either. Would you like to cross-examine this witness, Mr. Brady, while he's here?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The one thing I haven't heard yet, and the board hasn't heard yet, is your recommendations in this matter?
I do have them.
And then we'll hear from Mr. Brady.
I have them actually in writing. I just had one other, I had added to it, which I'd like to check with town council on.
It was three people that stood up. I believe three people that stood up that said they want to testify. Does everybody testify that wants to?
Yeah, I mean, I, we did swear in multiple people. I mean, you don't have to offer testimony just because you were sworn in if you don't feel like it.
That I was out there alone with the dog, so...
Okay, so you don't wish to testify then? Okay, thank you. Go ahead with your recommendations if you would.
Can I bring them up to you? So you have copies as well?
Yes, please.
Because of the circumstances of the attack, I did keep it similar to the dog hearing that we had with the two dogs that attacked the lady walking in the cranberry bogs with the same recommendations that were given to the board of selectmen. And also, I believe you made a set of rules, so I'd like to keep it the same for these dogs as well. So it's basically verbatim. The only one I did have, I was looking at with some concern, was the fact that this is, this is the third incident of dogs being under Mr. Brady's control that have had issues with other people. We had a child that was bit. We had two other people that were bit on AD Makepeace property as well. I believe it spanned 2013, 2015, and now obviously this one. I, I think if there is an operation, if there's something that would be added into as, as a number nine, was just a controlled area where these dogs, I understand it's a kennel, I understand it needs to operate, but letting, letting these dogs out, and you don't know what they're going to do, I mean, a dog's dog. I, I would like to recommend that there be some more form of control, whether it's a, whether it's a pug or whether it's a Great Dane, to be able to be in this enclosed area and fence in the area. So when the dogs come out of the kennel, that there is this constant fencing that takes place.
Okay.
That would be added as number nine. That's what you have for the nine. Would you like me to read all of these in?
Yeah, yeah. If you won't mind.
Yeah, has Mr. Brady seen your recommendations?
Uh, not yet. No, I have a copy here if you'd like to have this one.
In fact, why doesn't he come up? I know he had a question or it was something he wished to say earlier. So at this point...
Just to clear up a few things for the record, especially relative to what council said. One, I'm not denying that something happened, nor am I necessarily creating a defense as I sit here. First of all, I understand she provided photos. I don't know of anything, I don't know of any photos. I don't know of any report that's been done either by Animal Control or the Director of Natural Resource. All I got was a letter to appear here. Together with believed to be Fritz, believed to be Max, here we are.
Well, you, you do have an opportunity to see the photos and you did have an opportunity to cross-examine her as to her injuries, so...
Okay, but...
That was part, that was part of the process.
That's the way it works, so I got to come up here and ask for those things? I have to ask for a report from the town aware him? Is there a set of photos in the report?
No, we just saw the photo.
That's typically the way it works.
Hold on, we just saw the photos from the witness here. This is the first time we've seen the photos.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just in the interest of making sure that we're all clearing the appropriate process. If you've been charged with something, it's your obligation to go down and visit Mr. Buckminster or whoever to ask for the reports, to ask for the photographs. Did you do that? No.
That's my obligation?
That is your obligation.
Okay, well, that's the first...
A prudent, a prudent person charged with a serious matter would do that. And it's not the town's obligation...
So I'm not prudent?
To make your case for you if you chose not to take those steps.
It's a complaint.
And your failure to take those steps does not render his case invalid or the board's adjudication invalid.
I mean, at this point, I think we're splitting hairs. I mean, if you'd like to see the photos, you can.
I would.
I would like to mention again that Gary took pictures on the first day and picture of the ripped jacket and pictures of both hands on his...
I mean, I, I don't understand that Mr. Brady is disputing that the injuries happened, but he is entitled to look at the evidence.
Thank you. And further...
Wait, wait till you get back to your seat, please, just so the microphone picks it up. Yes, we just told him, Bob. If you'd like a second to go through those.
The scars are still here.
And again, the record needs to reflect that we just received these tonight. These were not part of the file that was originally provided to us. And there's nothing wrong with that. People can come in with evidence. That's part of what a hearing is about, is the offering of evidence, whether it's testimonial or whether it's pictures or whether she wants to hold her hand up to show us the scars. It's all, it's all relevant.
She just noted that we took the pictures.
That's fine.
I know.
But you've had a chance, you've had a chance to look at them. Is, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to, these are the recommendations.
Yes, would you like, take a, take a minute to look at those?
Are they going to get read into the record?
Well, not yet.
Okay.
For one, I have a couple of questions about the recommendations.
Okay.
For one...
Guess I should wait.
For one...
Yeah, I had asked Gary to read them before all this started. We're going to tape that thing to your lapel.
Yeah. I recommend that we have Gary read, as we normally do, the recommendations and then go from there.
Yes, I had asked for that.
I'm going to have some questions. Because there's a couple of things that are going to be difficult.
I request, I request that the authority, Hearing Authority Order Incorporated by reference as per the statute, the following. When not under direct control of the controlling person, the dog shall be contained within a building, vehicle, or secure and locked in a enclosure with six foot high or higher or angled arms. The dogs may only leave the owner's property accompanied and controlled by the person over the age of 18 on a leash not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds, used in conjunction with a muzzle. Microchip or tattoo identification of the dogs. Behavior training for the dogs from the trainer approved by Animal Control. Spaying or neutering of the dogs unless the owner of the dogs provides evidence that the vet, that a veterinarian is of the opinion that the dogs are unfit for alteration because of the medical, of a medical condition. The owner of the dog shall cause the dogs to be altered so that the dogs shall be reproductive, reproductively intact. Proof of insurance for dogs and the amount of no less than $100,000 insuring, insuring the owner. The dog shall not be left, be allowed to be left in a secure area alone without a person over the age of 18 at the property where the dogs are being kept. And the kennel handling area be completely fenced to minimize the escape of other animals under the care of K-9, Mr. Brady and Upper Cape K-9.
Just one question. On condition number seven, you say the dog shall not be allowed to be left in a secure area. Are you referring to an outside area?
It would have to be...
An enclosure, for example?
It would be like, yeah, kennel systems that don't have any other things fencing. So there's, there needs to be somebody on premise that's over 18. Like I said, these are the same regulations that you, the board, put on to...
Right. I just wanted to clarify that this refers to the dogs being left outside in an enclosure versus being left in a dwelling, for example, or, or the physical kennel facility locked up at night.
These were your words.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so this is, I, I've got a couple of questions, okay? It says, "When not under direct control, they can be locked into a six-foot enclosure, blah, 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 with a high fence and whatever." And I know that the kennels use those enclosures and they have a top on them and the whole thing and they're completely enclosed. And if you read seven, that means he's not even allowed to keep them in those enclosures.
Without a person of 18 years of age being at the property.
Right, but it's, I mean, it's quite often that they're inside and the dogs are outside.
And like I said, these are exact regulations that the board of selectmen imposed on the last two dogs that did the attack.
It's a little different when it's a kennel. And secondly, these dogs are meant to be bred. And if you spay or neuter them, they don't, they no longer meet their criteria.
Well, let's find out if this is part of his breeding stock.
You know what I'm saying? So that's...
This is just recommendations.
Well, no, but you know what I'm saying to you? I mean, it's a, it's a little kind of difference because it's a kennel. And maybe we have to handle the kennel a little different.
Absolutely.
Maybe though, there may be other things that we need to do that, you know what I'm saying?
Controlling the facility is the primary...
That's all I'm trying to say.
Absolutely.
In response to his inquiry about whether the, is, is one of these dogs or both of them used in your breeding?
One of them has been. In fact, Fritz is the son of Max from another female.
Do you have any intention, Max is a little old, do you tend to breed Fritz?
Max is still intact. He'll be 11. I don't, I don't breed him.
Yeah.
Fritz is already neutered. Fritz was a rehome back to me. Family, family ended up taking two dogs, long story short. Couldn't manage two dogs. Had a house full of dogs and kids and dogs and kids and it was chaotic. Asked me to find Fritz another home. I said, Walt, just bring her back to me, bring him back to me and I will deal with him that way. And Fritz has been absolutely fine since day one. I've only had him just about a year. I don't have a copy of his shot records. I found out they're in Fairhaven, so I'll get a copy of those. He's not due for his vaccine, well, vaccine's not an issue.
Right.
I'm curious though about some language. One and seven seem to contradict each other. The other one about being reproductively intact. A dog that's intact is reproducing. That's generally the term. This is suggesting that I get it spayed or neutered. They're both males, so it would be neutering. One already is, so, so how is it reproductively, if it's neutered, how is it reproductively intact? Unless I'm reading it wrong.
It just says if the dogs are unf, like, if the dogs can't have the surgery, basically, then they would have to stay, like, if it was going to... See the second line?
Yeah. It says, if there's evidence...
Unless the owner of the dog provides evidence that a veterinarian is of the opinion that the dogs are unfit for alterations, like, couldn't have the surgery.
So, so that means, and instead shall cause the dog to be altered so that the dog shall be...
That would be through, probably through chemicals if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly.
I don't, I've never heard of it, so I'm curious.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Well, you're just looking for the dog to be neutered or spayed.
Right, so one of them is already neutered apparently and the other one's not breeding stock, so it, it...
Right, and, and what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing as an answer here tonight for the first time is that you all have regulations that I'm not familiar with. He's referencing regulations. These are your regulations according to what he has just read into the record.
No, these are what we've put into effect with others.
Okay, so it's not a regulation person.
It's not a regulation.
That's what was said.
I'll clarify this just, just for your and everybody else's knowledge. The first, the items one through six here are items that are listed in our Dangerous Dog Bylaw.
Right.
That are conditions that we can impose either in some, as you see here, one through six, or à la carte if we decide certain conditions are appropriate and other ones aren't. So those are actually listed in the Where Ham Dangerous Dog Bylaw.
Okay.
Seven and eight are, are there because your situation's a little different than the average Joe who gets, whose dog gets loose and, and does something out on the street because you're a kennel operation.
Now, for the record, while, while it's been noted that there have been three incidences, there were two prior to this. That dog sadly was another rescue and a total mishap. All right, I made a mistake rescuing, thinking I was doing the right thing, and he did seriously hurt two people. Right after the second one, I was on the phone that day, sadly, put him down and, and that dog won't do that again. Fritz and Max, I mean, this, this is a first. I don't know what the folks talking about having encountered and blah, 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 never, never knew anything about those incidents. Not that that, not that that changes anything. But the best part of all of this is that for all the folks that live in Crane Landing or Tyhonet Pond, I probably will only be there another two or three months. Fortunately, I was able to find land. You need a minimum of X acres in the town to have a kennel. And as soon as it's done, we're moved. And it will be private and nobody will be walking on my land. For the record.
I have a question. How about yourself? Will you be allowed to walk with your dogs loose using these trails? Because I've seen you many times before.
Not these dogs. These, these dogs, ma'am, if we do impose these conditions, would not allow, be allowed to be off-leash. And they would have to be muzzled off of the kennel premises.
Right.
If, if we impose these conditions, and that's, that's not my decision, that's the five of us make that decision.
I would like to just add, just to make sure, I know Mr. Brady referenced that he does have some updated vaccinations and some paperwork. So if that could be added, just as a, as one of the stipulations to just, if he could provide us with that, that'd be great.
Number nine?
Uh, yeah, like, number nine, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. He's, I think that's already set, so I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alan?
Make sure you have those. I, I think number four really is not necessary. Bob's, I believe, is a trainer.
Yeah, that's a good point. He is a trainer.
And to sit there and say that we have to hire a special trainer for it, that seems to be...
Well, he can hire himself. It's probably a tax deduction too.
Got to get approved first.
Yeah, I just think that's, you know...
You're saying the owner's difficult?
I understand this, I think...
Usually the humans that need the most training.
Yeah. I think the incident... My, my thought process in this really is that the issue is really containing the dogs in the area that he leases for property. Everything else is really not relevant. No matter where the kennel is. Yeah, no matter where it is, it's just that if, if the dogs stay inside the area that's allowed and can't leave that area, then the issue, everything else becomes moot.
Yeah.
You can impose whatever you want, but I think the bottom line is that one point.
And like I said, my recommendations are just consistent with the last attack. I'm not adding anything.
Yes, they are.
We get that, Gary. I'm not trying to, I'm not dumping on you, it's just that...
It's there and it can be modified accordingly.
Unfortunately, it's kind of a different situation, you know, so...
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I think this, I think this solves the problem in general. Okay, but these are just for these two dogs anyway. So, but this needs to happen at the kennel. Almost a must do.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I indicated earlier that I've been a client of Bob's. Geez, I think going on 10, 10 years now. And, and as a client, you know, I've got a dog who's been known to do some damage on her own property. And she had legal defenses, but, but nonetheless, I would, I, it... Having, having my dog loose in... Having, having my dog loose at any point, I mean, I don't know that if she saw somebody walking a dog along the road, that she wouldn't go up because she thinks she runs the universe. And especially if it's a female dog, because she really doesn't like other female dogs, whether, uh, my dog might get in trouble. And I don't want to be sitting on, on the other side of the table here, uh, trying to defend the conduct of my dog, so I think the fencing requirement for the kennel, uh, really is critical. I think it both protects, uh, the public, it protects wherever you are, uh, because, just because dogs are on a private property doesn't mean they can't run off onto a public way and get somebody. It protects the people who, as we understand it, have the right to walk along that road due to the fact that they've purchased property from Makepeace. It protects the dogs from getting into skirmishes with other dogs. It protects the owners of those dogs from possibly getting hurt trying to break up skirmishes, and it also would protect Mr. Brady from, from having these situations arise and, and cause concerns over his kennel licenses. So I just wanted to state those facts from my perspective.
The good news is, the good news is I have a golden and, uh, so, you know. I don't worry about that at all. You could pull his teeth out and he still wouldn't bite you. You know, he's just how he is, so that's, that's, uh, you know. It's a little tougher when you have some of these dogs that have not necessarily propensity to bite anybody, but they have the propensity to protect their property.
Yep.
And that's when, that's what happens when you let them out. They want to protect the area, they want to protect themselves. And it's, you know, typically these things happen not because of the dogs, it's because we let them out, or because the owner lets them happen. And that's typically what happens. And I think, I think this, I think Bob has to, has to have, um, and, and Bob, you know, I love you, buddy, but it is what it is. You need to have a fence around this place. Uh, you know, when you go to the new place, whatever, you gotta have a fence. And that way, you're not gonna have this area, there's no more issues, it'll solve all your problems, and it's worth every penny of whatever you have to do to make that fence happen. And I think that's where we should be with this thing, in my opinion. Now, these other things as far as those particular dogs, okay, I don't think they're as, as violent as we think they are because, again, they were let loose and they were protecting their property. I think under normal circumstances, when he's got them on a leash or whatever, I bet they're fine, but, you know, we've-
Well, even if they're not fine, you can patrol them.
This is what we do.
Yeah.
This is what we've done, so we'll do it for these dogs, and it's Gary's recommendations and we should do it.
Okay. Mrs. Slaven, for what reason do you rise?
I have a question.
This, uh, this-
Public hearing, is it?
It's not a public hearing. It's a, it's a dog bylaw violation hearing.
Let her have the question.
I ask the question, whatever you impose on the owner, would that also be transferred to the great Nick property? You're only talking about the roads in Makepeace, I'm talking about what happens to those dogs.
No, these conditions, these conditions attach to the dog, dogs for life, unless, uh, down the road we remove the dangerous designation. And the requirements for the fencing would be the same.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and I think, I, I see Bob shaking his head yes back there anywhere. I think he gets it. You know.
The new place will have plenty of fencing.
Yeah, so, and you know, I think that sort of eliminates the issue. And I know, I saw you shake your head yeah, so I, I know you, you're in agreement with that, right?
I want, I want dogs-
Well, if you, if you, if you're gonna speak, come back up and use the mics, just so.
Of course, I want not just my dogs, but visiting dogs to be able to be dogs outside.
Positive.
Um, and, and I'm well aware of that. I, I'm, made the mistake of not realizing, like I told you, I just learned today that the folks that own homes developed by AD Makepeace have this carte blanche permission to be up there wherever, whenever.
Right.
I didn't know that. I know the property's been posted for a long time. I know the gate has been there for every weekend. It doesn't always get closed, it is what it is. I know the herring run is there. I go by it every day with my dogs and other dogs. I, I understand all that.
So the point is, you made a mistake.
Fencing, I, I let them out and I didn't have them on a lead and, and, and I'm, I'm sorry. I really am sorry that it happened.
I was gonna say, could you, maybe you could reach out to this woman.
Well, I am, I was, I was hoping to have had a conversation that morning, but, no, it didn't happen and, and here we are.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Fine.
It's not like I'm being ignorant to this or dismissing it. It's, it's not that at all.
Great.
I mean, I, I've been doing this a long time and, and I have probably 10 or 12 dogs every single day that I'm managing, beyond my own. And that is what it is.
Okay.
And, and the sooner, trust me, all, all of you, the sooner I can get out of Tionnet Village, the happier I am gonna be. And I'm gonna guess the happier you all are gonna be, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alright, so that, that's good news.
Mary?
Yes?
I wanna close the hearing first before we make the-
Is there anything else?
I'd like to make a couple of comments here.
Sure, yeah.
Yep.
Just, there's confusion like between what the approved uses were for the land, you know, by the landlord to the different parties. Is there an expectation that he fences the area now? For the next two months? If so, how, how large of an area for, for what he's doing? Little, little concern on the one and seven. And if, if the enclosure had a top on it, would there have to be someone 18 years of age there?
There would have to be somebody with the dogs, these dogs were outside, yes.
If they're in an enclosure-
These two particular dogs, not all dogs, just these two dogs.
Correct, but if they're in the house, it's fine.
Yes.
Correct.
With a screen.
If they're in the house, it's fine, yeah.
That's cause, I mean, enclosure with a, with a chain link top, you know, closed, it's, it's pretty solid.
Sure, absolutely.
Probably more solid than a house with the windows open and the screens. Could, could I ask, uh, through you, uh, with Mr. Brady, do you have any concerns with any of these, um, recommendations? And if so, um...
Well, just, I guess the short-term expenditure, if it's gonna be suggested that I've got a fence which effectively is probably 200 to 300 feet of frontage on this private way to be there a couple of more months, that's, that's probably a lot of outlay for, for no real good-
No, what he could do-
I, I think instead what I'd rather have is, is the-
Keep them in the enclosure and keep the restrictions-
Keep them on lead-
And just don't put them outside.
Keep, they don't, they, they come in every day anyway.
Right.
They're in overnight, nobody stays out overnight. You know, and, and so it says if, if they're outside, they need to be secured.
Correct.
Then I bring them inside, they get into crates, which are, which are locked, closed, not locked with a, a padlock, but they're clipped, closed. So they're locked so the latch can't open, together with then the door being locked, um, they gotta be a Houdini to get out of the building.
Right, and then if they're in the pen outside, that's okay, you brought them from there, bond a lead, you put them in the pen, that's okay too.
Obviously, they're not gonna go out the front door. They haven't gone out the front door since this incident, free to, free to just do whatever.
But I think we'd be expecting to see a fence around the new place, though.
There, that's already in the works.
Okay, so, so you agree to that a term?
I don't even wanna go there until it's fenced.
Terrific. That's all I wanted to hear. That's beautiful.
And you are insured, correct?
I don't know, is that a-
I'm just, I mean-
It's on the thing here.
Of course, I'm insured. Wow.
Just letting people know.
Ma'am, did you read the recommendations? Did you read the recommendations?
Yes, did you see those?
Do they make you comfortable? Will you be, will that make you more comfortable to go out and walk trails again and?
Yeah, okay. It says here, yes, they're supplied.
So as I understood, uh, the kennel, um, will be moved to another area within two months, and during this two months, the dogs will be under control. That's, that's what it says, right?
No, the dogs will be under control, like, tonight, like, right now, once you say yes, that's it. I mean, I, I want you to look over that, make sure you're okay with it. We're trying to make everybody happy here. We don't want to, you know, we want you to be able to, the neighbors to be able to go out there and walk and enjoy yourselves, we want the dogs under control. I'm someone that walks trails all the time and I'm armed when I'm walking, cause I don't wanna get attacked and I don't want to hurt anyone's dogs. I wish everyone kept their dogs on leashes all the time. But sometimes, things happen, so.
With these in place-
We just want, are, are, will you be happy with this? If you know that the dogs will be on a leash all the time, if there's an issue, you're gonna call Animal Control?
Yes.
And then there, the subsequent penalties, you know, for anything else that happens?
Yes.
We want you guys to feel safe in your neighborhood.
Yeah, with these in place, the dogs will no longer, they'll be going from the house, they won't be let loose, they'll go from the house. If he wants to walk them, he can walk them on a lead and it says clearly with a muzzle, and then he can take them to their enclosures. And those enclosures are pretty good. I mean, they got tops and everything on them. I've seen them, I know they work. So, once they're in there, then there's really no issue. So in other words, they'll never be running free again, so if you're walking by, they're never gonna run out and grab. And I understand, I saw the injuries and I feel bad for your injuries.
Yes.
I mean, that's certainly pretty scary. I got bit by my dog right here, I still have the scars right here and it's a little scary-
You don't have to show them.
When you get bit by a dog, yeah, I'm not gonna-
You don't wanna see Patrick.
I'm not gonna take off my shirt so you can see them, but I do, the scars are still there, and it's, they're probably 20 years old.
Yes, I know. I've got that experience now. I now know how strong they bite.
Yeah, it's pretty scary sometimes.
They, they have strong jaws. Uh, is there anything else to be said at this point, or?
Can I just ask, can we, can we just go through these? Which ones?
Yes, yes.
Cause I do, I, I do agree with you on number four. Um, I think that's something we can, uh, we can definitely remove, um, if that's up to you. Number five, the spay neuter, obviously I understand the kennel function. Um, you know, like I said, I brought it to you because it was for the other ones, just to keep it consistent. Number eight, I, um, yeah, maybe collection of the kennels and, and, and being able to secure it more.
Yeah.
I did see pictures at one point that there were signs there that he actually did, uh, Mr. Brady, I'm sorry, uh, did have an area that had a sign up said, you know, um, park here and somebody will come to attend to you on property, things like that, so that, there, there were steps taken in previous-
That was a previous time, yeah.
So, um, and then the amendment to seven, um, that Mr. Muniz brought up, um, and I would like to change the word secure area to maybe, maybe just listed as the exterior kennels. So if somebody, if the dogs are outside, that somebody 18 years of age should be on premise with the dogs in that area.
So if we remove in a secure area and shall not be left outside alone?
Yeah, cause there's no, there's no windows of, uh, getting out with, where this, where the kennel's located, so that can be definitely amended to, for this facility, sure.
Okay, somebody's tracking these changes so that when you make the motion, it'll be-
I can go over it again if you'd like.
Yeah.
The clerk is handling it.
I'm handling it.
She's handling it.
Microchipping and tattooing, I, it's a kennel. I mean, that's, that's, that's up to the, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's still his-
It should be, just because even if the dog took off and we had to find it or something, whatever happened, we could track the owner with tags or whatnot.
Alright.
Okay, and we're adding number nine, the records to be submitted to Department of Natural Resources, correct?
Yes, just the updated vaccines.
We need a copy of the insurance, obviously.
Yes, please, thank you.
Proof of insurance.
Okay, are you gonna, do you close the hearing before we do another?
Yeah, I think, anything else?
I'm moving to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion by Patrick, close the public hearing, seconded by Mary. Roll call. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick? Either yes, okay. Is there anything further to be said amongst us at this point, or are we ready for a motion to impose the conditions? And make a finding of, uh, dangerousness of the dog? That's the first thing we should do, is move that we do find the dogs dangerous.
Okay, I make a motion that we deem the two dogs, Mattson Fritz, as dangerous.
Motion by Mary.
Second.
Seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Next up, if, uh, Mary, if you could read the conditions.
Close the condition.
As, as renumbered, and Gary, if you could, you can interject, uh, if somehow we've got it different than your understanding.
Number one, I, I move that we impose the following list of conditions on Max and Fritz. Number one, when not under the control of a controlling person, the dogs, the dogs shall be contained within a building, vehicle, or secured in locked enclosure, six feet or higher, or angled arms. Number two, the dogs may not only leave, the dogs may only leave the owner's property accompanied by a controlling person over the age of 18 and on a leash, not more than four feet, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds, used in conjunction with a muzzle. Number three, microchip or tattoo identification of the dogs. We're omitting number four, which was the behavior training. Number, which new number four will be spaying and neutering of the dogs unless an owner of the dog provides evidence of a veterinarian.
We were going to, um, we're gonna bypass that because of the kennel issues, yes.
Okay, so new number four will be proof, proof of insurance for dogs in the amount of no less than $100,000 insuring the owner. Number seven, the dogs shall not be allowed to be left alone without a person over the age of 18 at the property where the dogs are being kept.
Just, I think that one was, uh, we had amended-
They're outside.
Left outside alone.
The kennel area.
Yeah, so it's outside alone, yep.
Only outside.
That the kennel handling area be completely fenced to minimize the escape of other animals under the care of Mr. Brady slash Upper Cape Canines.
And for the time being, we're gonna, we're gonna, he's not gonna have to fence this place if he keeps them into the outside enclosures for now, right? Okay, is that agreeable? But the new place, he agrees to fence. There's no sense in putting up a fence for two months and then leave. Doesn't make sense at all. It's a waste of money.
Um, and finally, that the records, um, from the other, um, veterinarian's office be submitted to the Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, that's Mary's motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? You're okay with this, Gary?
I'm, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. To Mr. Brady, we will be sending out a letter with these conditions to you, uh, once we get it typed up, uh, retyped in the office. Right?
Okay.
One question.
Yeah.
I'm not so clear, um, as to what microchipping and/or tattooing does for any dog?
It's just so you can-
Unless they run away.
Right.
Okay. So if either of these two dogs run away?
They'll have a tattoo or a microchip and-
So if they run away, then I've already violated all the other conditions.
Yeah, you're in trouble.
Pretty much.
Yeah, well, we don't wanna have that happen.
You pretty much blown it at that point, yes.
You've blown it at that point, yeah. Alright, so-
Alright, I just, I just wanna thank everybody for their patience and their, uh, good conduct during this, this, given what occurred. We've seen these hearings before, they become, uh, pretty emotional, people get pretty charged, we have people yelling from the audience, uh, and they, they do get kinda crazy. But, uh, this was, this was handled very well by, by everybody, I think, and I'd like to thank the witnesses, I'd like to thank the animal control officer and, uh, Mr. Brady as well for agreeing to these conditions.
How can I get a copy of what you just-
We will send that out to you.
You should have my address.
Oh, we do. You own property, right?
We have it. We'll get it to you.
We know everybody's address.
We'll get it to you, even if we have to have somebody drop it off, we'll get it to you, okay? So that you have a copy of the conditions, okay?
Okay.
Alright, thank you so much for being so nice. I know it's a difficult thing when you're, you know, you're just-
Yes, I just, I realized, I realized that it was very difficult. I first thought it would go much easier, but I was never bit by the dog before, so.
Thank you.
It was a serious experience.
Thank you very much. That's awesome, thank you. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Alright. Shall we get back to our listener?
Yes, um...
Alright, so liaison assignments, now, this is my problem. I've only got a list from two people. There's five of us. And so it's hard to say, okay, this is how we're gonna divide them if we don't have a list, if we don't have it. So please, this is your last chance. Next week, I will just dole them out, okay? They're gonna happen.
I basically let you know that I'm keeping what I have.
You, you are the one who sent me a list. You gave me a list and Mary, and, uh, Jim gave me a list. I have no other list from anybody else.
I'm only making one change.
Alright, so I'd appreciate it. Email me the lists so that I can compare them and come up with a thing. Next week, I intend to impose the liaison reports no matter what, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
You gotta get what you get.
Exactly. I'm gonna get it and I want it, alright? Because I, hey, I want Jim to start doing his thing too.
Yeah, Jim's eager.
Well, there's, there's a couple that aren't, um, liaisons, they're voting, um-
Yeah, we'll do all that stuff next week, okay? If that's alright with you.
Thank you.
Alright, I promise. Next week, for, for sure.
Do you wanna discuss the MPO thing that went out to everybody?
The MPO?
From Serpeth?
Oh, yeah.
I only can't do it anymore.
Yes, I did get that and we're gonna put, that's on for next week. It's on the agenda.
For next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we are gonna do that next week.
Yeah, even though, even though it's sent out to everybody, it's really not available.
Alright, next is discussion and vote for the appointing, for the appointment of a special print, permit granting authority designated for the Tree Mill Nail Factory. Now, so, so what happened is, in the legislation- Now, so, so what happened is, in the legislation... In the legislation... All right, so in the legislation for the overlay, it made us the appointing authority for that property, special permit authority. So, it's a ORI designee, yeah, it says ORI designee, okay? I don't know that we really should be in the appointing authority business for that. So we do have someone who can act, and Mr. Bowen was nice enough to come up with a gentleman, by the way, who we used, well, we didn't use, but the court used him for that, that stuff with the... Planning Board against Baypoint, right? So we, and he's agreed to do it. So I'd like to make a motion, do we have his name and everything, so that we can give it to Mary? Okay, Mary, you can make the motion.
You got it, okay.
You got it? Okay.
I'll give a little more background behind this gentleman. His name is Mark Bobrowski. He's a full, he's, he served as a full professor at the New School of Law. I actually knew him when I went to law school. He's one of the leading property practitioners in the state. He was appointed as the court-ordered mediator in the Baypoint lawsuit against the planning board. He did a great job negotiating that, making sure that things happened while the planning board's concerns were addressed. He's a true professional and knows what he's doing. And again, as Patrick suggested, you know, we could issue the special permit, but I don't have the technical expertise that this guy has, and I don't think anybody else in this board does either.
Well, if you knew him in law school, maybe I got to vote against this.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't take his class. I had somebody else for property law, but he was well reviewed.
All right, so can we have a motion, please?
Point Mark Bobrowski is the gentleman.
We'll make a motion, then we'll have discussion, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we authorize Mark Bobrowski to act as the special permit granting designee for the Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment overlay district.
Okay, so you have a motion from Mary. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Peter. Okay, so motions made, seconded. Now discussion.
So I understand that right now the Board of Selectmen is a special permit granting authority?
Correct.
May I ask, Mr. Slaven, were you on the zoning board of appeals? Planning board?
Planning board.
Planning board. You were a, to you, Mr. Chair. You've done, I believe you were a building inspector?
Yep.
So you understand zoning quite well?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I've gone probably 200 zoning and planning board meetings. I don't understand why we couldn't act and can act as the special permit granting authority. I think we do have some, some knowledge here, and we do have an attorney with, we have questions. I don't know this individual whatsoever, and he could be great. I don't know who he answers to. And I think it's our responsibility to represent what we think is the best thing for the town related to this, not for someone who is not a resident or citizen of the town. That's what I have to say.
Okay, Alan?
We have, excuse me, we have one issue, though, because Wareham Redevelopment Authority, we have two members on the board. So there's a conflict there, number one. I'm not really a big fan of Mr. Bobrowski. I was in the planning board when he was dealing with Baypoint, et cetera. Rich might like him. I don't personally. I think, I just know how it worked. We use John Witten, who's written a lot of the laws as far as zoning and everything else, for the town, which Rich has used as part of a thing. If we're going to have an attorney, I'd rather see Witten be the one that represents us because...
I don't know that Witten's health allows him to do anything anymore.
Is he out already? Because he was up until a year ago, okay.
See you.
Rich? We can't speak about his illness. If he's not, if he's not available, then that's, that was my suggestion, but I'm not a real fan of Bobrowski, that's all.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say?
Through my experience, I still have majority, though, right? Even if you accuse yourself, we'd still have a majority of the board to act on the issue.
Yeah.
Okay, does, does anybody else have anything they want to say?
No, that's it.
I have nothing, no.
No? Or Peter? No? All right, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, same, okay, so it's 3, 2, 0. All right, next, any of the town business not reasonably anticipated in the last 48 hours?
We do.
Sorry, my mic was off for some reason.
We have a sign request from the Wareham Garden Club for the Spring and Bake Plant Sale coming up on Saturday, 18th. They have four signs that they'd like to be placed up at various locations around town. We have our little checklist here. The club typically places signs near the Toby Homestead and a couple of other locations. So I, I'm happy to talk to her if we authorize this. We'll, I'll talk to the president and get the four locations that they want down.
Yeah, who are you, Mary?
Sorry, it's my first time getting in trouble from you.
Tell your, tell your TV station to get better microphones.
All right, so the reason why I allow this to go on, because they're, this happens like on the 18th, so they're a little behind, and...
Signs aren't exactly, we're not jeopardizing anybody's rights here by...
Exactly, so, I don't think it's going to be a real issue, so, all right, so, Mary, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next up, town administrators' report, please.
Mr. Chairman, I...
We'll keep you busy.
Oh, I think we'll move on from it tonight.
Really? Oh, wow, okay.
He's giving Alan extra time for liaison report.
Liaison reports. Mr. Slaven, you're up.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
I know you've been liaising.
No, actually, it's a very quiet week. Mass Municipal Association, I have my board meeting next Tuesday before we meet. Actually, it's all day. Bring a couple of things up to date that Derek didn't make any mention of. The House did a budget, you know, proposed budget for UG, which is the general fund, and also Chapter 70, which is the education. Our numbers, actually, if I'm not mistaken, after we get the assessments banged in there, I believe we're funded at a lower value than last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which is not nice. I just saw the Senate one, and the numbers looked just as bad, actually. It just came out about two hours ago, the Senate.
Did you happen to see the Chapter 90 money, by the way? Because I see it's only like 200 million or something?
They haven't passed the Chapter 90 yet. The bill's for $200 million. They haven't put the bond out yet, and it's the same thing. By the time they get it done and we get the money, it's very difficult to hire companies because they're basically already locked up for the year.
Right.
And therefore, the costs go up if you find someone. And we're trying to get them to do three years at a time, which makes it easier. So that's still on there.
They're not, Alan, have they not come up through you, have they not come off of that $200 million number for like, what, 10 years now?
Well, they did one year.
If you took inflation with everything else, it'd be higher. The actual figure, which was actually, they did a study for a year, and the figure should be between $500 and $600 million a year to catch up with the infrastructure the way it is.
Well, this is supposed to come out of the gas tax money, too, right?
Yeah.
Well...
What are they doing with the gas tax money?
Well, they haven't raised the gas tax money. Remember, there was a vote on that, and the public voted no.
Well, but even if you take the original gas tax money, they got to be doing more with it than that.
No.
Because gas prices have changed, and so does the tax.
Yeah, but the tax hasn't up that much recently.
It's per gallon, right?
Yeah, and the bottom line is that it's just, the money's not there for that.
Cause more efficient, too, Patrick.
Yeah, you're getting more mileage. It's, the bottom, the bottom line is, as far as Chapter 90 goes, we're still in the same situation. It's not getting better.
Oh, great.
CPA funding, some good news there. It looks like they're going to add $36 million to the fund. They're changing the rates for the, at the, basically, at the registry for the deed processing by a certain percentage. So they'll be, and the reason being is, we have Boston, Springfield, other communities are now part of the CPA program. So therefore, there's less and less. Originally, the CPA program was 100% match way back.
Right.
And it's down to about less than 20 now. They're probably going to go less than that.
Of course.
So that's, that's going to come in there. There is a plastic bag, manbill, a single use bag. It's moving along. It looks like it might actually happen. And we need to kind of watch the recycling grants that are coming up, because trash right now is becoming a real problem immediately. So they're actually looking at figuring out ways, because the recycling plants, they're shutting down because it actually, cost-wise, because they can't, they can't sell the stuff off like they used to. And there's, and actually, having human beings working, doing recycling, the costs are so high, these companies are actually shutting the actual facilities down that do recycling.
Right.
You're going to find that most of your haulers right now, that's going to work, basically move away from recycling, because there's nothing that they can do with it.
Mine already has.
But it's happening everywhere.
Mine, you can put anything in either barrel, he doesn't care, he doesn't recycle.
Because they're not going to do it.
It's not worth it.
And I think Derek has the tipping fees. I know the tipping fees went from 75 to, I think, 150 per ton. And the estimate we got a couple of days ago that I got was $250 coming. This is coming like in six months or so.
Yeah, no, we're over $110.
Yeah. Push the button.
He's on.
All regarding about the microphones, mine doesn't turn off.
Tipping fees.
You're supposed to do all the talking?
Did you see that? See what happened? Did you see you opened it up?
Around $110, but the, the cost to get rid of recycling is about $110 as well, so that's what you're seeing. There is a new complex opening up in Rochester. Selectman Muniz and myself will be going to take a, take a view of it if I give them the right date this time, so. But yes, it's, it's an issue, and it's something we've been talking about for, for over a year. And once the preferred rate through CMAAS goes away in 2020, it's going to be a real eye-opener, so.
Well, we're going to have to start working on that, and I guess Mr. Muniz is going to end up being our designee for that, I think, in the end result, so.
There's one other thing. There just was a court case on the marijuana. It was interesting that several towns went ahead and passed a bylaw banning marijuana after the towns had basically had put zoning in place. So they have a zoning bylaw, it was passed as a zoning bylaw. The state attorney general came down and said, you can't do that. You can't do a bylaw to offset a zoning bylaw, so.
You're seeing some interesting things. Sterling has a community, which I think within the last year voted overwhelmingly not to allow recreational, just overturn that and allowed adult use marijuana, I think, within the last week. So there's, there's an ebb and flow to things, so I'm glad we were early adopters, because that's not exactly what you'd call a liberal community.
I have some good news, though. Warren Tolman, I don't know if you guys remember him, he ran for governor.
Yep.
He works for a company, or he has a company, that has come up with a, a test for, like a breathalyzer for marijuana that should be on the market, he believes, in the next year. So that would really be helpful.
Is he looking for investors?
I would imagine the company's going to be worth a few bucks when that comes out. But yeah, they've been working hard on it, apparently, I just, I just heard the thing the other day, I just heard him talking about it. Apparently, they got maybe a year, six months, and they'll have it on the market. Yeah, Warren, I know Warren, I grew up with Warren, you know. I used to hang out with him and his brother, and his brother Steve in the basement of his house. His mother, my mother and his mother, Marie, were good friends. Yeah, we, I spent a lot of time with those two guys. You know, we used to play the accordion in the basement. He used to play the accordion in the basement all the time. All right, that's good. Anybody else liaisons? Jim?
Not a liaison.
You haven't had much to do, but you have anything?
I did go to the road commissioners' meeting just to see what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, they're doing a nice job, good group of people, sincere, have some issues to work with, with people, and they're very considerate in their approach, and they're doing a good job.
Good, that's great. Mary?
Nope.
Nope, okay, then that's, that's the end of that. Consent agenda, please. Approval of minutes from executive session of April 30th, regular session of April 30th.
Well, we got a bunch of stuff. Do you want bills?
Yeah, you have bills? We got a bill? Do we have a bill? Huh? No, no, we don't do that. That's, just goes in the box.
Okay, so approval of minutes.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a bill from you? How far behind are you, anyway?
Like six months prior, probably?
No.
Three?
No.
10?
No.
All right, I'm not playing.
Don't play along?
I'm not playing this game. I'm just stinking it.
Yeah, just...
Going in the wrong direction.
I've got some minutes here. I've got the, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of the Board of Selectmen from April 30th, 2019. Everyone was here.
Second?
There was one error in there where Mary made the motion and seconded it, and it was, so, that's a minor thing.
Oh, yeah, but we can fix it. Where was it? Jim? Show us exactly so we can fix it. Because Mary made the motion, she wouldn't have seconded it, obviously.
I don't know, maybe she really wanted that motion.
It was on appointments and interview, no. Is this last week's or the week before?
No, this is last, this will be the 30th, so it'll be two weeks ago, right?
No, today's the 7th, it's last week.
Yeah, it would've been last week, yeah, that's right.
I wrote it down here, just got to read my scribbles. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Apologize for that.
All right, all right, so a motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Now, when you do executive session minutes, you need to say, make the motion and hold, because we don't release them immediately, okay?
Sorry, do what?
So when you say the executive session, approve and hold.
That's how I make the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve and hold the Board of Selectmen Executive Session meeting minutes from April 30th, 2019. We were all here.
Beautiful. Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, that only leaves one thing.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say ayes. It's unanimous. Thank you, Wareham. Have a great week.